The rise, the way. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please bow your head for prayer. Please, Lord, watch over us this evening if we make decisions for our friends, our families, and our community, that we do the best we can, what we are provided, in your name we pray. All right, reading approvals minutes from October 21st, please.
Motion to approve and suspend reading.
Motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, proposed. All right, approval of the agenda. Any changes or additions to the agenda? And here again, I take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Pillar. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Proposed same sign. Thank you. General approval. 5A, 2018 Street Project Pay Estimate Number 10. Mochi's got it up there on the board.
If you have any questions, you can let me know. Jared on the line, are there any questions?
I want some.
If you want Jared on the line, he is available on my phone if you need him.
Do we need... Let's see, anybody has questions for Jared?
The only question I have is, is this the last billing then, with the exception of what's being held out?
That's my understanding.
What's being held out? I haven't seen that, so. Or I haven't seen what's assigned up there.
The recommended payment is $370,806, so it's about $48,000.
See, I have to double check that, because that number changes every single time they do an estimate, and I don't know why.
It changed $10,000 this time, rather than paying out all the retainage and worrying about the seeding. They're withholding $10,000, just in case there's problems with the seeding in the spring.
They wanted to withhold $10,000 for retainage when it's $750 worth of seeding that we came up and reseeded. So.
There's still questions on the survey stuff, too.
On the what?
The monuments. I need to Jared on the line if you'd like.
I think you might.
Yeah, go ahead. In the meantime, we're waiting for Jared. Any other questions, or?
No, it's Jared.
Hey, Jared, hi, it's Jared O'Vonour at State City.
I guess.
Right. So we are at 5A for the pay estimate number 10. And I guess the question is, what is withheld, what is still remaining withheld after this pay estimate? Do you have any of that information in front of you?
I don't have the estimate in front of me, but from what Ted had sent the payment estimates in September, and we had missed that, he mentioned at the last meeting. I wasn't aware of it, I must have messed up. So, we're recommending paying that payment estimate minus a retainage of $10,000, and then the order offsets for the patching stuff that was done incorrectly last year. So at this moment, we could call this a semi-final payment. It's 100% of the work minus the retainage of $10,000. And the reason of that, $10,000 if the work isn't done, we're not waiting on the work from Mayo at this moment. It just does not achieve the 90% coverage as that's a semi-final.
That's almost the full payment of all the seeding combined. I mean, we had... I mean, we came back in and we did $750 worth of seeding here last week, and now you're holding $10,000. I just think that's over and above an excessive.
Well, they've applied for and asked for all the money and everything to be paid at this moment. And we have to have some money, some, you know, way to enforce it if we have problems. So if $10,000 would probably be, and that's reducing retainage down by several hundred thousand dollars. I guess if Mayo wants to commit to something, or we could talk about reducing it to $5,000, but I wouldn't go any lower than that. And I guess it's kind of up to the council's discretion if they want to lower it from 10 to 5, but we gotta have enough money left over just to cover it in case, for whatever reason, we had to do the work ourselves.
Okay. Good. Ted, any other questions for Jared about the payment?
No, other than, I just don't think that $10,000, that's good.
I guess that decision, that $5,000 or $10,000, it'll be a council decision.
Okay.
I will be comfortable with these.
Dan, did you hear that discussion at all?
Yep, I heard everything.
Okay, all right. Casey, you have a question or?
So, I guess. After we paid for the, paid for the, I guess, the seeding and stuff, we will still have then, I guess, $38,000, I guess, held back, right? So, okay.
If you don't do the 10.
Okay, yeah, yeah, if you don't do the 10. And then, and then like that, that'll then, that'll then have to go back and pay for the damages, and the monuments, and like the street work, and I guess the patching and stuff, is that right?
I didn't hear what you said there, Casey, I'm sorry.
Sorry, let me move the phone closer, sorry. So then, so then on the, I guess, $38,000 then, that'll be left. That money then, that money will pay for the damages that was done to, you know, I guess of the monuments, and the, and the guys of the patchwork and the street work, is that right?
We, we... Okay, so, there was a patching that was done, and as of right now, we're not paying for the $38,000 worth of patching. And we discussed it at odds and length here. Because we said it was done outside of the back, the $38,000. We've offset, we're not paying for that. Right now, we've paid for all the work that they've done, minus that one item. Minus of $5,000 or $10,000 retainage, just to ensure that if we have any problems in the early spring, we've got a little leverage to get the contractor back to do it. You're talking about survey monuments, we've talked about this a couple times. This was a little bit tricky, because some of those survey monuments had to be disturbed to do the sidewalk work. All in all, I believe there were two of them outside of the right-of-way that were hit damaged. I need to work with Ted on those to see if, if there's anything that... Right now, you guys had about 40 or 50 of them reset in town, and we're just trying to sort through invoices. If we're gonna ask them to cover anything, it hasn't been done yet. But we may ask Mayo to cover the ones that they hit something and damaged something away from the work area, outside of the right-of-way, as normal. But we just kind of collected, sifting through that stuff today. So, yes, that's still on our radar, we're not closing out the project.
Okay. All right. Okay. So, the retainage, so you want to, you want to hold back the $10,000 as Moore suggested, or you want to get $5,000?
I've got a question, I mean, the reseeding, that, the first seeding was done last year. We got our punch list, or a couple different punch lists, and the seeding was not applied on. If it was on there, we'd address it in May, when we came back and did all the patching and all the other extra work items that we had. This, the extra seeding that they're talking about, was not brought up to our attention until early. I got an email saying, oh, by the way, these areas have to be reseeded, how long until we end in the middle of September? So, scheduling contracts, we got our contractor, we had to get him back in here. He charged me way more than what that $750 is, to come back in and reseed it. And he went over and above that, he went in, he drilled it in, I mean, he, you know, he drilled in that seed to get that done. We got it. But as far as now, and for them to say, you know, that there's monuments that are out there, there's not one monument that's, that was notified or listed in those set of plans. The surveyors never stayed a single one of them, never closed the bottom until after. It was just, here, tear out this curb and gutter, do all this stuff. If those monuments were bound underneath or embedded in that curb and gutter or sidewalk, we didn't know about it. You can't see that.
I think that's what Jared was talking about, if they're outside of your work area, but we're still in the strike.
Well, even if it's this far outside of the curb, it's gonna get disturbed. If there was only two of them, but we gotta get in behind there to work on. But, again, not, not one single monument or property corner was marked by the surveyors. Nothing. And in the city set of plans, if there's monuments or points around there, they should be identified by the surveyors out there. We have no idea where they're at. And we weren't, it wasn't a bid item to lock for them or to reset them or to clean up the bottom, we didn't, we didn't know where to disturb them.
I thought that was discussed several times.
Yes, a year ago, and now it's just, this is the first time.
Well, but you said, you never talked about it, it was talked about.
Yeah, right, right after, after your server came in, and we didn't know about it. And then you have to, we went around with Jared and went to all his locations, we talked about it. But now one of them was on the plans, and all the ones that we saw were in the sidewalk or the curb and gutter.
Jared, are you hearing that conversation?
I'm really not, and I guess, if I could talk with Ted tomorrow about it, I can. As of right now, there's two survey monuments that we think were hit by during construction, which doesn't amount to that much money, that big of a deal. That's what this question or discussion was on here.
Yeah.
So, I can, I can follow up with Ted. $5,000 retainage is more than enough to cover that. So if he disagrees with me, we'll have a discussion on it.
Okay, that's...
It might or might not go anywhere, I'm just, I'm not sure.
That is something I, I believe our board, like, you guys have that conversation. And, please do. Okay.
I fully expect that Ted will need lots of documentation in order to justify paying for something. And we have photos and invoices and stuff like that, so I will have a conversation with him tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Okay, back to the withholding of the $10,000. What would the board like to do, if you want to stay with that, what the engineer has suggested, or do you want to reduce that to 5? What's that, Matthew? Or less?
I move to approve, approve the pay estimate, but I guess like lower the, I guess, the $10,000, $10,000, I guess, of the retainage. So then, I guess, I guess a $5,000.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Stern and a second by Pillar. Discussion. Roll call. Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
O'Vonour.
Aye. Motion carried. All right. Jared, Jared, is there anything more you have for us that you want to discuss?
No, I was intending to, we have your meeting in two weeks. This was something that we probably should have approved two weeks ago, though, so that's why we had it on your agenda for tonight. So I apologize, it's my normal stuff, I'll have to read it next meeting in two weeks.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay.
I guess we'll be off again.
All right.
Thank you, board.
Yes. 6A, lot purchased, Christmas second edition. So, Mochi's got it on the, on the screen here, the lot was purchased, Shannon, do you?
Yeah, the guy that lives next door to it, this lot was set aside for employee purchase. And so you guys have to approve on the sound of it. He didn't really say what he wanted before, he was just curious if it would be available. I checked on some of the other lots in the area. Right north of him, there's an empty lot, that one's current value is $8,650. There's, there's some up around the corner, on Sunflower, those are a little smaller, those are roughly around $6,000 value. So I guess it depends on you guys, if you're willing to sell it, and then what you want to sell it for.
You know, and when we did this back, it's almost like eight, nine years ago, because we have very few lots in town to build on, and we wanted to hold some back just in case for essential workers to use if we needed in our, in our community here. So, I think it's not a bad idea, I think there's, there's lots to build on now, there's plenty of homes for sale. It's not, I don't see it as a huge necessity to hold it back anymore. Unless somebody else has other thoughts on that. Shannon Hop, is the value on square footage? Okay.
Because I'm pretty sure the land found their ratio of whatever was the scene, well, one's...
Okay.
One's...
So, is it up to the commission then to come up with what's still the market's value is for that lot?
Most likely, yeah, probably. You know, we just sold a lot here for $15,000 with a garage on it, but we, part of the reasoning is for what we had stuck into it.
And that one's given was valued at $10,000.
This one's valued at what?
$10,000.
Oh, this one right here was valued at $10,000. So what, again, Shannon, what is the number that you're taking?
Uh, $6,300 up to $8,650, but the other couple were listed out, or down there.
So Dan, did you hear, the lots up in that area that are set, that are, value are between $6,300 and $8,650 are the values of those lots in that same area for that size? So is this something?
Now, we made that lot available for $7,000.
Okay, we have a motion by Pillar that we make it available for $7,000.
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Hack. Discussion. So I guess has, so has he, I guess, made an offer, huh, of what were you going to pay?
I told him that that's what I would tell, tell you guys, because that's, you know, I explained to him that the other lots were not used to pack, and he was fine with those.
Okay. Well, I want, how, so how many lots do we own? In, in town that, I have, that are vacant? Not very many.
I think it's more than four.
Yeah.
So do we put them all up for sale, and put them all up for bids as minimum?
They're all up for sale.
Yeah.
But do they have signs on them?
No.
Do people know they're, they're for, people don't know, people don't know they're for sale? You know, what, you know, we put a minimum price on them, and we're gonna try to make a few dollars off these.
Apparently, it's based on the area on specials and most types of things as well, so you don't just blanket say we're gonna sell every lot we have for this many dollars.
Sure. No, I understand that, you know, this one could be, you know, we set a minimum price of six, and another one in town somewhere else, we'll do it at 55 or 10. You know, if we're gonna get rid of this one, we might as well, you know, put them all up there, if we're paying taxes on it right now, it sells.
Just specials.
The specials, yeah, that's it.
We, we've never advertised any of our empty lots for sale, if that's what you're thinking.
Right. Right.
Throw them on the website, social media.
Sure. Or else we continue to pay specials, and we keep them mowed and the weeds down, and do that, I don't know. Dan, you have, you have a thought?
Well, that, my question would be, it didn't sound like we have any obligation to advertise this thing. Does that just mean that if we approve that, that we would sell this for $7,000, that whoever is aware of that has opportunity to come to the city and basically bid on it, or whatever?
They've been offered forever already, I mean, they've been available forever. Were they initially advertised, I don't know.
But it was always an employee lot, so it really wasn't...
No, it wasn't always an employee lot.
That's true.
Right, right, we, about eight, nine years ago is when we decided that we want to keep them for...
And I don't know if these were originally advertised when we had all the lots saying the city has lots for sale, and that would preclude of having to advertise them again?
Not all, but if, if it wasn't advertised, it should be advertised, yeah. I think that's what your ordinance requires.
What with all the other purchase agreements up along Elbow Woods, when we give them, they were never advertised. Somebody came in with a purchase agreement, or their offer to purchase, and it was acted on.
Who'd have minded? They should have been.
Current status of the lot where we had the garage on there, that we, we went ahead and we did market that particular location.
Yep.
You know, there was a lengthy list, I don't remember how many years ago, but I remember that there was a lengthy list of properties that had been turned back to the city for tax forfeiture. And they were all advertised, but I have no idea which, you know, how to tie that into the properties now on the current... I'm sure that list is...
It was in Christmas second, it would be on that list, and it would be done.
Yeah.
Well, I would, I would hate to just say, okay, let's sell it tonight for $7,000, and it's in the newspaper next week, and someone said, well, I would have paid 10 for that if I even knew who owned it, and if it was for sale or not. Because, I don't know.
That's why, that's why I asked the question, what, what made us market then the lot with the garage on there, where we down off the house out of there?
We marketed that for the sole purpose of getting our money back.
Yeah.
Which, you, you just made the statement that every lot that the city owns right now, we're paying specials on. So, you know, along the lines of what Jerry was saying, are, if we did that with that other one to, to get our money back, we're continuing to spend money on specials for the lots the city owns. We want to go ahead and put together a general list, and throw that in the paper?
Can.
I think that would, I think that would give us our best value for, for, if we put a minimum price on there.
I think, I think you just opened yourself up a little bit. If we go ahead and approve this here for $7,000, and like you say, it's in the minute, and then Joe buys it, and then somebody says, well, shuck, I like that lot, I would have given you 10, just like you said there.
I think we need to...
Shannon.
Whereas if we throw, if we throw all our properties out there with their location, I don't know if we have to come up with a price just yet, but that, just that they're owned by the city and they're available.
Shannon, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I think the putting it on bids is probably a good idea, just saying tonight that, yeah, you agree to sell it, and then put it out on bids, and then nobody else bid against Joe, then we sell it to Joe. But at least give other people the opportunity, you know, since...
But we have to have the minimum bid price.
Which you guys can agree on, or, yeah, minimum. And then if someone says they want it for 10, then Joe's out. Unless he gets 10.
Are you gonna auction them then? Are we gonna give them a right to raise?
What do we do with this one over here? We basically took them.
That was a private sale.
Yeah.
Because you did advertise, and you didn't get any bids. And after that, you could enter into a private sale, if you received an acceptable offer, and that's what you did.
And that one was different, too, because we had purchased that at auction. It wasn't returned to us and advertised. We had bought it, so we advertised it.
That's right, we bought it at the auction.
So I would be willing to bet these were offered at one time, like you say, that big listing, and they just sat there since then.
Okay. Well, how hard is it to find out if they were listed?
Just go back.
Just find it out. But it does make sense, like, with the term motion, to turn that into a minimum bid instead of, or minimum price instead of a sell-off price, and then advertise all of the lots that you want to sell without prices, and invite offers on.
And recently in town, there's been auctions where people, they've let people rebid and raise their price, and that's, that house across from Steve Borlaugh, or, across from Darrellier, that was, that was one bid, and they didn't let it re-raise on that. So we could, that's our decision.
That was sold at auction.
That was sold, that's sold at auction, you know, but they said...
Well, they only got to make one bid, they couldn't?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Yes.
And it wasn't really an auction.
Exactly. No, there was a lot of people upset about the way it was handled. Okay, we have, we do have a motion and a second on the, on the table here. The motion, Mochi, would you, to sell the lot for $7,000.
Make a lot available and sell it for $7,000. Okay. You want to amend that and make that the minimum asking price, or?
Can I, with Robert's rule, can I amend my motion to say a minimum bid of $7,000?
Yeah. You...
It came through a motion to amend, and then you go on that motion, and then go on that.
A motion to amend my motion. That's a $7,000 minimum.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the motion by Pillar.
Second.
And second by Stern. Need more discussion? Roll call.
On the motion to amend, Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
O'Vonour.
Aye. Motion carried. So now we need, we need a roll call again for a motion.
On the motion to offer the property, to list, to make the property available for sale with a minimum price of $7,000. Pillar.
Aye.
Hack. Stern.
Aye.
O'Vonour.
Aye. Okay. Motion passed. Okay, where does that leave us now?
You're offering it for sale, and the minimum price is seven, we'll advertise it, and any other lots we have.
All right. And you're still gonna check to see if they were, at one point, if they were listed?
Yeah.
Doesn't matter, right?
I, I, I'd say it doesn't matter. I mean, you got, you got people on Haysen that have just moved here in the last year. If it was lifted three years ago, they'd have already thought, so.
Okay. Uh, down to 8A, commercial building permit for the hub, for Western Steel Builders. Shannon?
Pretty straightforward, you moved down to that object. And we just need permission, since it's a commercial building.
So have they already started work on this before they got the permit?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure he has.
And, and why?
I'm sure they saw what we said.
But he, he submitted his building permit to the city, it just hadn't come to the board yet?
I wrote him a letter to remind him that he needed to get the permit, and then he came in and filled out the permit, and now you guys are finally approving it.
I see.
Okay, wishes the board.
I'll make a motion to accept the building permit for the renovations to the hub.
Motion by pillar.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion.
So are we gonna? Give them penalty for something for?
If you want, I guess.
My building and now adding a building permit. It's the last one that we just did. It's speed. We then I guess set like five hundred, hundred eighty bucks.
I was gonna ask the same question or similar question.
I'm I'm okay with that because that knows. I mean, this isn't his first rodeo.
Shannon?
Uh, we found out that the guy's changed the fine sometime a couple of years ago. It's five hundred dollars now.
Up to five hundred?
Not two, okay. So it's one hundred. So then they get the number.
Okay. How much was this building permit for to cost?
One thousand and some dollars.
Oh, I don't know.
Nine fifty, yeah.
You know, I guess the last, I guess, fine. That there, but it came from the, I guess. The planning zoning board, right?
Yeah, planning zoning projects.
Yeah, 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 yeah. The ones that came up with the dollar one.
Okay.
I make a motion. Are we we comfortable with whatever formula we used for that one?
One second, Dan. Uh, but Commissioner Hack is making the motion.
He's making, we've got a motion and a second, I'm sure. You can always do another motion.
Can vote it down.
Or we'll definitely do a different motion. Do you want to assess a penalty even in a separate motion after this?
So if we're going to impose a penalty, we would have to vote against the the motion on the floor and then start again?
You can do it that way. Or amend the motion.
Good amendment.
Yeah. You want to amend? The motion?
No, yeah, I'd like to amend it. And add a penalty of three hundred dollars.
Okay, you have amended motion by Hack. To approve the building permit and penalize. Western Steel Builders three hundred dollars.
First, you're just voting on the three hundred penalty.
Okay, we're just voting on adding the penalty. Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Hack. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion.
How what was where did the three hundred come from?
Commissioner Hack. Um, that was his motion, the three hundred dollar penalty.
Did he reach in his pocket or was there math or?
Uh, it looked like he was searching his mind.
I I basically divided divided the initial building permit and which was five seventy-five. And I think just a kind of rounding number. So reaching in my pocket.
So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Roll call.
On the motion to amend to include the penalty of three hundred dollars, Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Omenour.
Aye. And now we will vote on. The amended motion.
On the motion to approve the building permit for the hub and include a penalty of three hundred dollars, pillar.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Omenour.
Aye. Motion carried. You good? Okay. All right, eight B. Uh, building permit for Steve Scheid. Shannon?
Uh, yes, sent you all pictures. He does say he will get the north wall. That's the south wall. First of all, it came into town over the weekend without permission. His leader called him at the last minute and said he could do it that day. This isn't the original trailer that he talked to me about for the spring. This is a different one. He got is that it's nicer than the first one he showed me. Um, it had some additions on it, so that's why the siding is like that and it's hole in the walls because there was doorways and things. So he's going to get this side closed up. Before winter and he's going to get escorted. And then we'll have to give him some kind of a timeline to finish. Putting on the siding all the way around it. And whatever else. He's got friends and relatives who are doing the work for him.
So he and the so Steve's not the landowner. But the landowner and Steve came and talked to you before this came in?
Yes, because they had a lot of trouble with the water and sewer, so I talked a lot with the landowner. We got Wade Wade Solen in there and he got the water sewer hooked up. And then I talked to Steve this spring and he actually said he showed me pictures and.
This spring?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was this spring. Other summers.
Okay.
And showed me pictures and like I said, this is not the one that he showed me pictures of. And I haven't talked to Steve since then. Talked to Stevens, but haven't talked to Steve.
Okay. So Ruth Stevens is the landowner?
Yeah, and she was kind of surprised when we came to.
Okay.
So does the uh, the building permit indicate? That as part of that permit is it's going to re-side that thing and trim it out along the bottom and stuff?
Yes, that's what um, he said he's going to do the skirting in the north wall. Let's put a little note up in the corner there. And that he has it.
That is that is called out in the permit?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I said, we have you guys give him a date on when to have it completely sided. When you would like that completed. So that's kind of a, there's no question mark.
Well, I guess Casey, Casey, do you have a comment?
Yeah, you know. I guess I know that. Know that in the past, as we've like moved in like an older. Home, you know, or whatever, but that had to go up for, I guess, like public. Public. Comment, yeah, and. I know the trailer house is the same.
My, I'm a little disappointed that it would be brought in without approval. Uh, it's not what he showed you. Part of me thinks we need to have you maybe Lauren Lee still inside it and inspect it. It looks like the floor zone is falling, falling in on it. I I'm not pleased with this building in our community right now with the way it is. We showed us our pictures beforehand before it's moved. The water is not hooked up to the trailer house. And I I don't think we should allow that to happen until. If we allow it to stay here, to have everything done to it before it's usable. Um, Steve apparently didn't plan it this coming and tell this coming spring anyhow. So I'm not.
Now, what is the ordinance? If we were to deny this, it would be removed immediately or is that the state? I mean, I I don't know, I mean.
If you deny it, what would happen?
Can we instruct them to move it off city property?
Oh, you could.
Is there any ordinance for that or timeline or?
Well, if he was supposed to get a moving permit before it was created on, I think that's one of the ways of evading the issue, yeah. The moving permit comes from the county. The moving permit is issued by the county tax director. And he didn't do that either.
But the city has one now too.
Not for mobile homes.
Oh, we don't have one for mobile home?
No. That's issued by the county.
Only for the.
When Trukenberg brought his up by the double street community, ever. Prevents.
Yeah, the other structures.
Okay, so the county would have done.
And they didn't either. They weren't. They weren't contacted about moving permit either.
So then we pretty much can instruct them if we choose to deny this, to get it off city property immediately. Is that what I'm hearing or?
We consider there's a timeframe. You know, if you go back to the, I guess. You know, the, you know, the nuisance or whatever, I think it's, I guess, thirty days or something, you know.
Yeah, I didn't know if that would follow to that or. I don't know. Okay.
And and the spot is going, Shannon, is it okay? The property lies there, I think it's within its boundaries, okay?
This is bigger than the original one too, but it's different.
Well, I'm afraid to say if we don't do anything, we're setting a very bad precedent. On moving structures and that are. Are similar to this that we don't want. I don't know if we want to tell the guy he has to remove it, but I don't think we allow him to. Use as a dwelling until everything's done to it properly. And if we give a, let's say it's a May one deadline and things aren't done by that, then maybe we say it has to go. And I want to be. Generous, but I think I don't want to, I want to make sure that things are taken care of too.
Well, maybe what we want to do is invoke a penalty for moving it in without having the appropriate. Permit, although I don't know if we can invoke a penalty if it's a county permit for moving.
Right.
Yeah, we couldn't for the moving permit, but we could for the building. Permit requirement.
You know, I guess, you know, I mean. I think we need to. Make a statement, you know, let's say, I mean, I mean. Well, it seems like every year someone's dragging the trailer house in the town.
I want to I want to make sure this one does not slip through the cracks. If there's an agreement that he has to have that finished up externally. So that it's aesthetically pleasing and that's all part of the permit stuff. We need to make sure that that's fully documented and it's. Able to be found. If it doesn't happen later on, we need to be able to to go back and find that.
I agree. Man.
You know, you may even consider some sort of a. A larger penalty that you collect upfront with a return of the portion of it upon completion of the project or that. That's some kind of.
More carrot.
Yeah, I mean, it's too easy to, yeah, okay, I'll pay three hundred buck penalty. And then bend in this, the year from now or half year from now.
True, that's that's a really good idea.
I'm not sure. I don't. I don't know the ordinance well enough to know how high it could go. Do you know how high it would go?
Five hundred dollars per day.
Oh, yeah.
Per day.
It can be as much as five hundred dollars per day.
Okay, well, that gives you a lot of room. Do you know when it even arrived?
The weekend, not this time weekend, the week before, the Sunday.
So eight days ago.
Eight eight days ago, no.
Can we refuse occupancy until the work is completed?
I think we can, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Lauren would have to inspect it.
If you have one.
Lauren would have to inspect it. As part of our building permit process.
But Lauren's inspection isn't going to say, well, it doesn't have. Nice siding on it, so it's uninhabitable. There would have to be a reason that it would be uninhabitable.
So if we're going to turn down a building permit, should have a motion. To approve it and then.
That's the preferred way.
Omenour.
Yeah, that's the preferred way, yeah.
So Dan, I'm not sure you heard that, but Casey asked Pat if it's. Probably with this, with this request of a building permit to. Make a motion to approve and then vote against it.
Okay, so if we do such a thing, then where where does that leave him, the homeowner?
Well, then we then we have our conditions saying that. I'm speaking out loud here, just thinking, but if we say that there is a. A twenty-five hundred dollar fine. And the the improvements need to be done to it by a specific date, let's say. May one. And if it is done by May one. And we say, okay, it's good, then we give him. Fifteen hundred of that back. Is that kind of what you're, is that the? I'm not, I'm not making a motion. I just, I'm I'm thinking, just I think aloud.
I mean, that sounds like you're approving that with the conditions. Because if you don't approve it, how is it supposed to work on it and get it done?
Yeah, that's that that that's where I'm going with it.
Good point. So approving with, we can approve with conditions then. And then we want it.
Then we'll be in conditions, yeah.
Inspected, and we're not going to hook up water till it's all this is done. You know, if he comes in February first and it's all done, great, but. It's going to be hard to deal with.
Do we want to do we want to stipulate that it gets inspected first? Because you're you said you're seeing from the pictures that it looks like the flooring and stuff may be. In bad shape?
Yes.
That should be on his dime also.
Absolutely, that the inspection would be, I agree with Pat, inspection would be on Steve's dime also.
Why does he make him pay a penalty or a fine upfront and you're going to refund the portion most fees could be taken out of that?
Yeah.
I don't know, it's uh. My thought was to. Let's say that we just turn down the building as a permit. And then he would have to. Fix it up where it's at. Leave it door on the tires and once it's. Once it's in. Good enough shape, I guess, applying. To the building permit.
Along the lines of what what Casey's saying, could we could we shoot down the permit at this point? And then and then just share with him that he resubmits the permit with the conditions that the work be done. By May first and that he would be he would pay a deposit on that and, you know, kind of just fool feed him what we were talking about doing. Have him resubmit for for approval from the board?
With with a a penalty of some sort that's refundable, partially refundable?
Yeah, we just spell it all out like you were kind of. Verbalizing there your thoughts. Maybe we provide that information to him and say we, you know, we shut down just the general building permit. But we recommend that you resubmit a permit with these stipulations. but we recommend that you resubmit a permit with these stipulations to the board for consideration.
I like that. And then if he says, no, I don't like that, then he can just remove the trailer. Absolutely. We don't normally do motions to deny.
We're not.
Okay, so he, so you're saying make a motion to approve it with, with conditions?
No.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve it and then we, we can say no.
Is that your motion, Dan? To approve it and then we're going to vote against it?
I'm not telling anybody how to vote.
Of course not. I've never think of that.
I'm making motion that we approve the building permit.
Hey, we have a motion by half to approve the building permit for Steve. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion? Roll call.
Hat.
Nate.
Stern.
No.
Heller.
No.
Over now.
No, okay. Building permit is denied. So now we need to create a list of items that need to be taken care of by Mr. Shide and come up with a penalty that, and, and come up with a refundable portion of this penalty if you want to come up, if you want to give it some refund. But I think it's a good idea that we make it a fairly substantial fine that, with the refund, so it is, it's a good carrot that he knows he can get a big part of this back. I have no problem with him having this trailer here or him fixing it up and making it acceptable to the neighborhood and our community and having Steve live in town. I just want it to be taken care of. I think that might be the best way to get it done. If he doesn't like these conditions, then he has to remove the trailer by a specific date. Pat, is this something we, go ahead?
Well, I was just going to say if, if you're going to also require the inspection, maybe you want to do that before you establish your conditions so you know if there is something that. Put it in the corner.
Good idea. He's not paying utilities on it now. He did not expect us to be moved until spring. Maybe we can, before the next meeting, you know, we, we let him know that he has to pay to get it inspected by Lauren Weist and that by the next meeting, we will come up with conditions in terms of keeping this trailer in town. Is that, is that okay, Pat? Buster?
Jerry, I, I want to burst your bubble, but I don't think Lauren Weist is going to be available for a while.
Well.
He's having some major surgery tomorrow. I was phoned out today from my wife who was visiting with Peggy.
Okay. We, we can get others inspected. Shannon could maybe do it too.
Okay.
We'll find someone. Okay. Thank you, Buster. So do you just, do you have Shannon in contact?
Yeah, I'd like to.
The landowner and, the landowner and the trailer house owner? And let them know that we will be, what we decided tonight, that we will have, we'll come up with soon. And maybe in the meantime, he and she may have their own input as well. Your thoughts? Okay. It's the cost share on lot survey.
I guess this is mine, I guess, uh, I guess I have to apologize. I didn't know that this was going to be a lot of deceiving. Of course, I would gave you guys all this stuff like prior, but.
I kind of know what it.
I'm ready. So, so I bought, I guess, lot one and lot two, uh, the Schaefer edition. Um, it's just, I guess, west of, I guess, Jimmy's Bar. I bought this a couple of months ago. And so anyway, then I guess, uh, you know, I guess, uh, looking at the, at the square then, I guess, uh, square then, I guess, the footages of footages of this lot, um, it's not, it's, what's on the Vanguard site is not what, what I actually own. So, so anyway, on this, this here than sheet here, this is the flat that was on file county, I guess, county there. And, uh, so, so anyway, then I called up Shannon and I'm not claiming that I own the street or anything. I just don't want to pay tax on that, I guess, a square footage of that street and the specials. So I called up Shannon and she said that on the map it shows that there's no street.
But your legal description said less than fifty feet, so you weren't really.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so, so on this map, it shows there's no street and, uh, so anyway, a little bit of background on this lot here, um, so, so anyway, back in nineteen ninety, a city then bought this lot for a dollar. Must have went back on, I guess, taxes, okay? So then, so then that lot was, was in, you know, the city's, I guess, so he's, I guess, property then. So then in ninety-five, uh, John, uh, John Garrett, Garrett then bought that lot, built the building on it. Five years later, Elclanid bought it and then for the last, and then, and then he then like owned it eighteen years, nineteen years, and then after that, I bought it. So then, so anyway, for all this time, um, that lot has been getting, has been getting taxed on unfair values and the specials to charge against it due to fact the size of lot and that. And the lot, as it's on the map here, is about, uh, forty-two, forty-two, I guess, thousand, I guess, a square feet. And that street is about eighteen thousand, I guess, a square feet. So I mean, that's, it's a pretty good sized chunk that's gone on there. So then anyway, at that time, I guess, I talked to Shannon, you know, and I just wanted just to make it right so I don't have to pay taxes on that and, um, so Shannon then, Shannon then said, well, there's no street on there. I said, well, yeah, I know that, but then, so then she said that I have to give it survey in order to, order to change everything and get the right, the right, I guess, measurements on the lot. So then, so then after that, that time, I, I asked Monty, the city would then be, be then, I guess, like willing to, I guess, share as far as cost. And Elclanid said, yeah, probably, you know. So at that time, I went ahead and, and, um, and talked to, um, Ken Link and he then gave me a, gave me a cost of, I guess, uh, twenty-eight hundred dollars to, I guess, uh, to, I guess, three grand. And, uh, and I guess, one other thing that I always wanted to do is to section out a piece of property on my dad's lot, which is joining us. So I went up there, well, here's a good time now, you know, get done, get done both of these at once. So anyway, I went ahead with it, um, Ken then had, I guess, started on this project. He had later found the, um, the footages of the lot. And so then, at that time, I was probably into this project in like eight to nine hundred bucks and so then I asked Monty again, you know, to say you can help with this or whatever. Monty said, no, you know. You know, so then I thought, well, I'm already into this thing eight hundred bucks and I don't have any kind of map. I just have the footages of this lot. So I thought, well, you know, I'll go ahead and I guess, uh, go ahead with this, so. And I got the other Vanguard, I just printed this off the Vanguard site last night. So then anyway, uh, you know, because I feel that, you know, it's when the city, I guess, put that street in there that they should have re, re-then platted that. If that was replatted, I probably wouldn't have went down this road, you know. And, uh, you know, I mean, the fact it wasn't replatted like when the street was done, as you see the appraised, the appraised value of that land is, is, I guess, uh, twenty-three grand on that full, that full area, a lot more. Well, it's almost cut in, cut in half, you know, so I mean, so right there, you know, when the land value is high, well, then on the, on the, then I guess seller, he wanted to go off of this appraised value plus a little bit of premium, you know. So I mean, so, so then, so then I kind of got screwed on that too because I paid for land that I don't have. But, and then two, the specials on that lot are about ten grand as well. And, um, if that was re-then platted back then, the special would not be that high on there. And then as you can see.
I have a question.
Yep.
When, when, uh, property goes from person to person, is, is there, is there, apparently there's not a requirement that a, a survey be done on the land. It's just taken for, it, it's either taken for granted that, that everything is correct on the flat or, or the, the buyer has the option to, to spend the money and, and have it resurveyed or? Because you, you talked about several transactions between people on this here and so it would seem that nobody requested or, or had it, had it replatted or surveyed, or they would have found the same thing that you found when you, when you paid for this, correct?
Yes, and I guess, um, you know, I guess, I was always told that, that around here, like in this area, nobody ever does that, but I mean.
Sure.
But I mean, uh, eastern part of the, I guess, like US, I guess, it's, it's a common thing that every time it changes hands, it gets re, redone, so.
You, you, you're right because when, when I was in Minnesota, when I was in Virginia, I had to pay for a survey on both my property transactions there. So I guess I'm a little surprised. With this survey now being done, does the city have any obligation due to errors of the past to look back into history here and, and make whole then any of the landowners?
You mean for the taxes, Dan?
Yep, taxes and specials.
So I, can they tax?
I'm just asking a question, I don't.
How far?
Can I ask you how, what was the square footage that Ken came up with after he re, redid it?
Of the whole lot?
Uh, yeah, of just lot one.
Of the lot one, so it's like twenty, twenty-three thousand now, I believe. It is, uh, twenty-three, two, thirty-nine of the replatted lot one that doesn't have the street.
Okay. Cause yeah, I mean, your legal description says that it's less than north fifty feet and the square footage, yeah, that's why I was curious about the square footage, but the dimensions that they have on here don't match the map because it's an odd shape and they can only have two that are the same number, so they take the total lot and then they kind of monkey the whole numbers. That's why those don't match. But, I'm, yeah, if you're supposed to be less than fifty feet on the top, you know, those numbers are smaller than what the map says, so you're getting, your specials are going to be based on these smaller numbers, not on this map.
Well, if you go up.
Cause if you go up fifty feet down from the, the top one is three eighty-four on the map, but here it's only three seventy-eight.
Yeah.
So it's going, it's getting smaller as it goes down on that triangle.
Even if you look at the whole flat, there's, I mean, there's, I guess, like numbers on there crossed off and then.
What does Ken's new lot size come up to? Like what is that? Left side, right side, north side.
Okay, so then, so then, so then, let's just say in the property lines that run, I guess, uh, you know, you know, run, I guess, the north and south, um, the Vanguard site here, it says that those were a hundred and, a hundred and, I guess, a twenty feet long. Now on Ken's deal, it says it is, it's, I guess, uh, uh, um, uh,
One twenty-nine, is that what that says?
Seventy-six on the new flat that's done.
I don't, not, not this one here.
Yeah, oh, oh, you have a new one.
I got a new one here.
Okay.
And we, and the, so the yellow is my lot and the orange is, is the road. All that.
Hold that lot up, stay up. So one from one twenty-nine on this.
Yeah.
And this is one twenty.
Yeah.
And now it's seventy-nine, it's seventy-six, seventy-two.
So, but, but I mean, even if you go by the square, though, I guess, square, I guess, of the footage on the Vanguard one, I'm getting then like tax on, I guess, uh, the forty, forty-seven, I guess, forty-seven, I guess, thousand, I guess, a square feet, you know. And when really, all of it owns, I guess, twenty-three.
So also I have the question again, but let's just say for argument's sake, I go ahead and I give my land resurveyed up where I live and I find out that I've been paying more taxes because somebody put pins in the wrong places sometime in the past. And I come to the city and request for the period in time in which I own that land, that the difference be paid back to me by the city.
Can't you go back two years or is, is it?
But you own it that long, so haven't even paid taxes.
So Al, so Al Clyde could come, Al Clyde could come back, you know, and request for two years, even though he's owned it for eighteen. Right back.
Through the abatement.
Who's, right.
You know, but I guess.
Head out to your question, Dan.
So you're saying that if I own my lot for eighteen years and I, I found out that there was an error by, by virtue of having it replatted and, and pinned, I can only go back to the city and ask for two years of retribution or, or payback on the difference?
Correct. Cause who's, I, I, Pat?
Well, that, that's it, uh, in our area, in, in our state, the, the rule is that the buyer is expected to beware and know the boundaries and if, if the seller doesn't know the boundaries, then the buyer can have it, the boundaries established. But there is no requirement for locating those boundaries. It's optional with both of those parties.
Sure. But, but there is something that stipulates. But, but there is something that stipulates in, in writing that if I, if I pay the money and I find out that there was an error from the past. That I can go back and seek monies back from any taxes or specials paid for the difference.
You can go to the abatement, to the, to the taxing entity and ask for abatement at the time of year when they have the abatement. Meeting and, and they get, they have the opportunity to approve or deny the request for abatement.
Up to two years.
Not a given.
Oh, for two years, yeah.
According to the century code is two years, an abatement can go back two years according to the century code.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't hear that, is that part of the question?
Yeah.
No, but it, but it's not a given, they have to approve it.
Correct.
And they could, they could just easily come back and say, well, you know, you as, as the buyer had the opportunity when you transact. Did on purchasing that land to have a survey done at that time.
Yeah, that's also correct.
Yeah.
So Casey's not asking for an abatement, obviously, because it's not open for six months.
Well, you know, well, yeah, well, but still, I'm gonna pay the taxes for this next year, you know, it. Because I was told that I can't change it right now.
But you can, you can ask for abatement next, next year, whenever they have the abatement meeting.
For the time he's old.
For the past year, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So, so then I guess, uh, uh, you know, moving on here, you know, I, you know, so then, so anyway, then the final bill. That I paid, paid then, I guess, Ken Link, was over, I guess, uh, over, I guess, uh, over, I guess, five grand. There's some, there's some other problems too that came about, but not, but not them like tied on the street part, but, um. So then, so then, yes, you know. Out of all this work, you know, now, now, I mean, now, I mean. The city has now this nice map that now. You know, that now, I guess, of the, you know, I guess, you know, I guess, it lays out a block, a block, I guess, a corner here, a block corner there. Which we did before, yeah.
There should have been, they cannot find it.
On this old, well.
There should be blocks.
They were there.
Okay, they were there.
They were there. But not of.
Not on your property, because they were on.
Not on the flat, no, no, it was on my property. It's a block corner.
Okay, so then Ken shouldn't have had to replace those if we already have them there, right?
No, yes, and, and those there stay, but then off this whole flat, we didn't know that where, where the doors were at.
So you found the corner ones, but that was it?
Oh, no. All of them in that area were all found. And, and now every one of them has got like a GPS, I guess. GPS for them too.
He just added new ones where he marked your property.
Yeah, he, he added, I think, two new pins for the other property that I always wanted to, I guess, split off my debt, yes. But these other ones, no, but. So then, so then, I guess, I'm just, I'm just, I guess, wondering. You know, if the city can help me out some, I guess, this bill or not, um. You know, I guess, I see it as, I see it as. You know, the city got. I mean, some, I guess, uh, some, I guess, of value of this. When I feel that, I mean, on that road, it should have been. Platted in the way back when it was added in, but.
So does this mean, Shannon, that this road, that's gonna be Jimmy's corner all the way to TSC?
No, not a single pin, so it's, it's definitely, it's, I'm thinking it's platted, we just probably don't have it on the map somewhere.
So Matt Claris is a property that's just west of this, is he paying the street too?
He shouldn't be, cause I mean.
Shouldn't be.
Right, I mean, he can check into it, but, you know, if you look at all our maps from our engineers, they show the road there. And that comes off of our flat. So, you know, that's where they get that information from, so why that particular flat still shows that no road was in there?
All the descriptions accepted the fifty feet on the north side, so it's, it's out.
It's not supposed to be.
It just wasn't.
Just.
Just wasn't marked on this one.
Yeah. But the other double check on the other people, it might be Casey's worth the food god of the deal. But if the lot was platted or it is pinned, so. That's the city's property boundary is where those pins were at, and then if the street belongs to us.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm not saying it's my street.
No, but if we already have pins there, any other work that got done was only for your benefit, so.
This doesn't even show the.
Which I paid for, which, which that.
How old is that?
That should have been not, not sold. Never leave on that lot.
Doesn't seem to, yes, right off. Nineteen ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven?
No.
During two thousand going to this, it wasn't there. So it shouldn't even show up.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't show up there.
Okay.
It's not there.
It wasn't there.
You know, I'm just, I'm listening to what, what Pat said in the state of North Dakota, or at least in this area here, it sounds like it. It's always the option of the buyer to pay for a survey if they feel that they want to do that at the time of the state purchase for land. So, so again, I'll just throw on a hypothetical, if, if I bought land from somebody and I chose not to do it. And then for whatever reason, I think years later, I decide that I wanna, I wanna split off something on my property. So I go ahead and I do the survey and I find out that it was all wack to begin with. I mean, I, I, I can't go back to the original. I can seek abatement if there was error in terms of paying taxes and stuff like that, but I'm the buyer, so it's, it's up to me whether or not I do a survey or not.
And, uh. And I mean, and I mean, uh, yes, you know, I do agree on the, I guess, like survey, yes, but I mean. But I mean, what I did is I had it replatted for that street.
Right?
You know, so I, I think that kinda goes the city street, yeah, yeah.
Does his billing break that down, sorry? Does his billing break that down anywhere, what, what that portion would be? How much time he spent surveying that street?
No, um, no.
I just, I feel like if the pins were already there, that established where the street was already. Because if the property pins were in the lot, in the property of Alex's building. Anything out of that would have been city properties, so that would be the road. Whether it was planted on a map, the pins were still there, which established the city's properties beginning, and their personal property and, or, sorry.
Yes.
And your, your property description does say less than north fifty feet. So, you know, right now we have a map that shows a road. But all we have to do is look at the legal description and say, oh, Lot One minus the north fifty feet, cause there's a road there.
So then, yes.
When, when they determine the, the specials and stuff like that, what are they using? Are they using the legal description or are they using the map?
They are using the legal description. They're using, like Casey's right on the, the square footage isn't correct on there. So that is where the abatement process would come in. But as for the flat and all of that, as long as we already had pins on our property corners, saying where the property mine is. The map, if it showed a, a road or not, the prop, the description shows that it's there, whether the map did or not.
Yes, but I mean, nobody knew like where those pins were and, and.
Well, if they were there, all you have to do is go out and find them.
And at that point, I was about eight or nine hundred dollars right to that point, just to find those pins.
You could have had me do it for free.
I called you and I did ask you to do it and you said there's no road there. You said you have to get it surveyed.
Because you wanted to know what your north boundary was because you wanted to change that in Vanguard.
I just wanna pay my fair tax.
Right, right, and I'd say it is correct in Vanguard.
Was to get it then like surveyed, so that's what I did.
Okay, because.
How long have you had these lots?
Uh, I've had it for three months maybe now, I don't know.
Okay, so you, so you haven't paid specials and taxes for, for years or anything on that? So there's really no abatement or just, just for the first year?
Well, if he, if he applies for the abatement in June or whatever, then he would get the several months that he's.
Sure.
Yeah.
But that, but that, that difference from an abatement standpoint is not going to, so the cost of it. And, and again, you know, when you, when you choose to do the survey, that, that, that's the option that any buyer has on their lot. Whether they find anything problematic or not, you know, you hope you don't, but if you do, then you, then you're obviously correcting things for the future.
Well, I mean, I just feel that if the city would have. Platted that as they put the road in, or else I was told that it was just as easy as I have to find the pins. And then on this process. I don't think I would have done it, you know, I mean, I mean, it's a huge, I guess. Huge, I guess. Huge, I guess, the cost on my part and, I mean. And I feel that the city now got some. Somewhat of a gain of it now, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of real good information on there.
Casey, did you need to have it surveyed in order to buy that other little chunk from your dad?
As I said. You know, just for years, my plan was to always then have that thing split off, so I thought, well, so now here's a chance to do. Do things at once.
Yeah.
And I mean, I mean.
So you did need to have it surveyed to have that little chunk out of it?
Okay, so then, so then, so then. So then, on that part of it, that's been my dream for, I guess, uh, uh, you know, for, you know, what, I guess, like ten years. And I have not done that for ten years until now, until this, this dynamic street deal came up, so it's like, well. I wanna have to pay tax on a street that, that's not mine, so I was doing both.
So yeah, for him to remove the street? I mean, he had to pay for the survey anyways, so I mean, I wouldn't say half, you know, cause you have to pay for the survey.
And I'm not asking for half.
Yeah, but.
I'm really not asking for it, sure, you know, I mean, yeah, I mean, I didn't, I didn't go into this, you know, say, no, the city's gonna be. Pay, pay, I mean, pay, I mean, half of this bill, you know, I did, you know, I mean. You know, if you guys wanna, wanna go in it. A thousand bucks, you know, I mean, that's up to great, you know.
Hey, I only, I only cautious of that, uh, any, anytime anybody from this point forward decides that they want to survey their, their lot. Then would they not have grounds if they find here and there to come back to the city and say, hey, you helped somebody else, you could help me too?
Pat, do you have a, do you have, what's your, do you have a recommendation for us on this or?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering, what is the benefit to the city from this?
Well, so now they got the block, you know, you know.
Because you've established a corner up there, you mean?
Yes, where that, where that on the old flat. It does not tell.
Right, it wasn't pinned on that.
Yes.
It was pinned.
Well, it was pinned, but it wasn't, not on the northeast.
It was pinned on very far north.
It was on the northwest.
Yeah.
On the northwest corner, it was pinned, it looks like, but I don't see a pin on northeast. But did the city, the city didn't develop that Schaefer addition either, so it wasn't the city's job to pin somebody else's property. The developers have that choice.
Should I look at the map of the whole addition?
What is, what is the updated plot cost? Everybody go, that map right there.
Depends on the law of work.
That one right there, that's not the end one that Ken had done. Wonder what that cost?
Five thousand dollars.
Huh?
Five thousand dollars.
Five thousand one hundred thirty-six forty-five.
Excluding yields, excluding all that stuff.
I can say that if you resurveyed every property in Mason, you would find differences. Because modern surveys are so much more accurate. Different surveyors use different techniques, even though they're supposed to be come up with the same result, but they. There really are errors in most every survey. And Ken Link happens to be living out of time, he's got good equipment that can get very accurate results. And there're gonna be changes, yeah.
And I, I think with all due respect, the, the cost to doing the survey is really on the, on the buyer. The, the fallback here now is that for the three months or whatever, or whatever you get hit with, the higher pass. That it sounds like there's a way in which you can go back after that. And then, and then you've got that savings then from that point forward.
I do feel like we have some benefit for this, this new map of this, this area. And then we've not had it. Properly laid out.
But arguably, again, what, what Pat said there, if everybody went out and re-surveyed their lot. And then put, got the flats updated and submitted that to the county, then the city gets sent out of having accurate information on that as well. So, so do you pay there, Bill? And that's what I'm, I'm fearful that you're, you're opening up here.
Well, I guess you could, you could say that, Dan. If you told me if I redid buying. That it cost me five thousand dollars and I might get some money back, I don't think, touch it with a ten-foot pole, but.
I don't, I don't think that Casey anticipated that on the theater.
No, sure not, I, where you, yeah.
No, 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 I mean, you know, as I first, I guess, like talked with Monty, you know, you know, all that, he said, you know, they probably would be like interested in sharing. Sharing, like for other costs, you know, I mean, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I mean, like bank on, yeah, you know, it's gonna be half or it's gonna be, you know, well, you know, I mean. You know, I mean, yes, you know, I mean, uh, you know, it's a small amount, you know, I mean. All that helps, so.
Okay. What are the wishes of the board? Or we can table it if you want, or we can make, make a decision now. Casey, have you any more?
No.
Can we table this until our next meeting?
Absolutely, if that's what you wanna do.
What are you gonna do between now and that, Casey?
Well, I don't know, I agree with Jerry, there is benefit to this new map, but I understand your point too. My, my question would be. Did, I mean, I'm not a surveyor, I'm not an engineer. Did this new piece of paper that we have laying there now for the city has and have to be done legally? I guess, I don't know, I, I, I mean, if it did, why did? I guess, I don't know, I, I, I mean, if it did, why did Ken do it? That's my view.
It was paid to.
He had to for Casey to incorporate those two pieces of property.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking, if it had to be done, to redo it, but, uh.
And it was, yeah, I think for Casey's state of mind or comfort to know exactly for his, like, he was stopping the taxes and the specials and stuff, but, yeah.
Well, and I was told that, I mean, I have to get it surveyed.
Well, you would, yeah, to, to cut that little piece out.
Well, no.
And then to find out where that road.
On the Vanguard, in the Vanguard.
Right, right.
Taxable, taxable square feet.
Because it was wrong. Yeah.
I was told I had to get that survey.
Okay, so, so in order for you not to get, for years to come to not get a bill for the square footage, the tax, taxable.
Right.
He had to do this.
Yeah.
So then, we kind of are on the hook for something.
Probably, yeah.
He, 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 he's getting paid back over the years, it's just a long payback period to get the five dollars, I'm sure.
Yeah, real long.
Yeah, does, does anyone know when that frontage road was built? I mean, that, I would assume that was, must've been surveyed, but.
The only thing that changed is, if you look at the Vanguard, their side, the sides are correct. Side one and side two are correct, if you look at Casey's midfigures, but the front and the rear are the only ones that changed. They were a hundred and twenty, and now they took that extra feet, fifty feet off there, and now he's down to seventy-something. So, the frontage road, if he got specials on that frontage road, the, the distance that it is is already correct in Vanguard. Only thing that they screwed up on was that fifty feet, the north fifty feet, that hundred and twenty on the front and the rear, so. Even the, the specials that he got hit would have only been to that fifty feet. North and south, not even the long side on the frontage road, because those numbers are correct.
Depending on how the special assessment committee did, 'cause a lot of times they do front foot and square foot, and he's got tax on the square foot.
Right. Right, right, and I just those out there weren't square.
So, yeah, so the tax was on forty thousand, not twenty-four thousand.
And, and, and two, like, even on like side one, the Vanguard sheet, it says three hundred and, three hundred and, three hundred, I guess, to seventy-eight feet.
Yeah.
And. What it actually should be is, uh, three hundred and, three hundred and, I guess, uh.
Pretty close.
About forty-eight feet.
And then the other one is.
So that's off by, I mean.
Well, the other one's off a foot.
Thirty feet there.
He didn't give you the new legal description for lot one.
Well, no, lot one is still, lot one, block two.
Yeah, I mean, he put the measurements on it, then give you a legal description, so that it doesn't have that.
You mean that north seven, where? For le, what do you mean?
That, well, that's not gonna change, it'll still be lot, lot one, block two, block two minus the northwest fifty feet.
Yeah.
That's what it is, that's what it says, so.
And because of the angles on, on the eastern left side, those are longer than fifty feet.
Yeah, yeah.
Those measurements are, so it's kinda deceptive in terms of trying to figure square footings based on, on those. But that was Vanguard's issue of the problem, and somebody.
Right.
And then that was too much.
If there was a survey when they did the frontage road, they would know how much they actually removed from lot one. But instead of using that north fifty feet, that was kind of sloppy description, northwesterly, you know.
Unfortunately, there's a lot of them.
I still think there were partially on the hook for some of this, since it has to be redone, the change of the Vanguard. But what does that, what does that equate? What's that value? I don't even, you know, if we said, is it five hundred dollars or is it a thousand? How do we, how do we justify that and say, okay, it's, it's one, it's one-fourth of the overall cost? I don't, I don't, I don't even know. 'Cause we wanna change this in Vanguard, right?
Okay.
Yeah, and we will use this.
So once it gets filed with the county, then they take care of it for their, and it gets changed, and that's.
And I guess, yeah, and that's part of the, you arguing is that this is, this is supposed to be, it should be changed.
Yeah, I mean, any, anytime that you get your land re-surveyed and you update the flat, it goes to the county, and, and it, it goes into the, the tax roll with the new information.
Yeah, right. And I guess if I was in a land war with my neighbor over two feet, bound, two-foot boundary, that'd be a little different than when you're, when you got. Square footage of forty-two thousand square feet versus twenty-three thousand square feet. Too bad we only have two commissioners I can make up, without a man to here, and you have to, obviously, you can't make a motion, Casey, or both, but, um, this is a. I don't know, I'm not sure where to go.
What is, what is the value of that, what you're saying?
Would it help to have information from Mr. Link saying this is what, this portion of the survey amounted to?
I think so.
I think it would.
He doesn't charge us for that.
Well. I'm not gonna ask for that.
Put it on your bound.
Steps you took. It's kind of all that, but.
I, I.
You know, I guess another thing too, you know, I mean. You know, like, you know, right now, I got a current bill with the city for, for, I guess, uh. For, I guess, a recycled asphalt, like thirty-eight ton or something like that. You know, and charging twenty-five dollars a ton, I think our cost was like nine dollars a ton, and then. You wanna make a swap and charge me at, at your, than the cost or whatever, you know.
Well, Jason mentioned possibly table it, I'm okay with that, as long as we, in the next two weeks, we get, try to get information from Mr. Link, what the. Portion of our cost would be.
I've been asking if there's a cost to get that from him.
Okay. Dan, you okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Jason, can I?
Yes.
So.
Postpone.
We.
I don't have to make a motion, you just table it now.
It's a motion to postpone in action.
Okay, so we need a motion to postpone.
So.
Okay, motion by hack.
Second.
Second by pillar. Roll call.
Pat.
Hi.
Heller.
Hi.
Ovinor.
Aye, motion carried. All right, thank you, Casey, thank you guys.
Just for clarification, is the question going to be, to what would the cost go to establish that northwesterly?
To, to shore that road on this flat, what did that cost for that?
Well, the northwesterly was already.
As far as I understand, both the north pins were found, all of the north pins were there supposedly.
Well, the northwesterly one was pinned, I didn't show it.
I didn't see it on there, but supposedly.
It was pinned, but yes, it does not show it.
It doesn't show it.
No. So, it was there.
Okay, so.
So the question is, what was the cost to establish that road on that flat?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, moving on. Eight D, uh, two thousand twenty liquor license renewal for box and bar.
Motion approved.
Motion through by Jason.
Second.
Second by pillar, discussion. Roll call.
Pat.
Hi.
Heller.
Bye.
Stern.
Aye.
Ovinor.
Aye, motion carried. All right, um, reports, Casey. I don't wanna do anything at this time, okay, thank you, Jason.
Uh, Dave's gonna help me, but, uh, I'll start out with, uh, David mentioned to me on our. Possible selling of motor grader, uh, did you see there was interest in?
Yeah, I had a, had a gentleman call wondering what the city's intentions was, if we were gonna sell it, or just let it sit there, or what, and I said, well. Commissioners have to decide whether they wanna put it up on bid, sell it, or, or even decide you wanna fix it, I don't think it's worth fixing, but.
No.
I guess you guys need to determine what you wanna do with it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to legally put it up on his, right, Monty?
You should add the tax, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know that the value would be enough, that would have to be, but I think it would be better if you did.
Right.
Okay.
So I, you know, would entertain a motion to see what we'd like to do with that.
Okay. It's, it's sitting there, it's not worth fixing, I'm.
Yeah, payers are bad on the motor.
No, the ride's already here.
Things there, whatever, it's.
Okay, so do we need a motion to, that was on motion for a bid?
Yes, that was motion for a bid.
Okay, motion, motion by hack, second by Stern. Discussion. Are we gonna replace it? Do we need to replace them?
Well, I think, yeah, but, of course, this budget's not gonna, uh, require it.
True, this budget won't support it, yeah.
They won't support it, uh, I think we'll look down the road in the future.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Pat.
Hi.
Stern.
Aye.
Heller.
Bye.
Ovinor.
Aye, motion carried. You let your interested party know that we'll have it for bids. Did he have an offer for us?
No, he was just wondering what our intentions were with it.
Okay.
Uh, John Dear Motor is back, in action, uh, I really went well with that, uh, we did run in, uh. Jet and Storm Drains, our, uh, transfer of the dump truck box is complete, so Hazen Wolden is done, Dave just told me. Uh, and then the last thing is, we've got some, uh, curb gutter sidewalk replacements to be done, and Dave's gonna help me with these bids, because, uh. I don't, I can't make heads or tails really all the time, probably, uh, make a mistake, so Dave, if you could.
There's a section of curb over by, uh, between Tim Chor's property and Western Steel Builders, where they cut through the curb to put, uh, I think, water and sewer. To one of Western Steel's buildings, uh, to replace that curb and gutter, uh, Meisner Construction had a price of five hundred dollars, um, Winkler was nine hundred. We had to replace curb stop over by Jerry's property, um, curb and gutter and sidewalk together, uh, Meisner was eleven twenty-five, Winkler was sixteen hundred. Then there was Alley Apron over by Wolf's, that, uh, failed, um, Meisner Construction replaced that curb and gutter, Alley Apron was thirty-three twenty-five, uh, Winkler was thirty-four hundred.
That was all right.
Yeah.
So, with that being said, I, I'd like to make a motion that we take care of these and award the bid to Meisner Construction.
Do you know what the total difference was?
I don't, I didn't add about this. It's, it's.
It's above like a thousand bucks, man.
Hey, we have a motion by hack.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. Casey, so then is this work gonna get done this year yet, or do we need next?
I was hoping if the weather holds, to at least get the curb and gutter parts, we don't have to worry about snagging them open cuts with the blade of replying. Um, that Alley Apron, we've got that filled in good with recycle and stuff, so that would be fine till, till next year, till spring.
Yeah, he did really stated on his bid, uh, Winkler, or Lee stated weather permitting, no guarantee of completion in two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, mine was pretty much the same, saying that if the weather were to go, we'd get out of there.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Pat.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Heller.
Bye.
Ovinor.
Aye, motion carried.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Pillar.
Nothing reported this time.
Okay, uh, HCD.
I did, uh, do an application to GRE for concrete for our Christmas tree area on Main Street, that I call the Christmas tree area. Haven't heard from them, but, uh, according to what I was reading, you know, they, they could do a application up to twenty-five hundred dollars. Of course, they will do more than that, but that's probably a little more involved, and they could force a little higher upwards, but, so we'll see. That will definitely cover the cost of the concrete there, and I did see bids from Winkler and also Meisner Construction, but. Until we really know we're gonna get the bid, I had, we had a bid it, uh, with the concrete and without, so we just have to wait and see what's, what's what. And, no, it's not gonna happen this fall.
Okay.
I don't think.
All right. Any else, Buster?
No.
Um, briefly, I just wanna draw attention that, uh, attention that hire was highlighted in the, uh, is it North Dakota Living?
Yeah.
North Dakota Living magazine, very nice article about her and our community, and what she is, uh, been doing. You all to look at that, very nice article, um, and. Secondly, did you all get a copy of this? Saw that too?
Yeah, okay.
Did you get a chance to read that at all?
Yeah.
All right, I had Shannon, talked to Shannon about this last week, and she got this prepared for us, uh, this is, Pat, did you get a copy of it? This is the, the long past due on its, uh, building permit, and, um, gonna have Shannon send this letter off to. Langford, Colerankford, this week, if you guys all think it's.
Maybe, because I don't want it either.
What's that?
Dan will know what it is.
Okay. All right, then, okay. I can read it to you, Dan, if you want. We'll, we'll, yeah, we'll send it to you, Dan.
You can just send it to me, uh, that's fine.
Thank you. Okay, is there anything you see, think, change, sort of, okay, all right. Okay, that's all I have under my report, uh, ten A, Union State Bank, cash management agreement.
Has this been our?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by.
Lord. Second.
Second by hack, discussion. Roll call.
Heller.
Bye.
Pat.
Hi.
Stern.
Aye.
Ovinor.
Aye, motion. Aye, motion carried. That takes us down to approval of bills.
Motion to approve.
Motion by hack to approve the bill.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Hack.
Hi.
Stern.
Aye.
Heller.
Bye.
Over and hour.
Aye, motion carried.